Please let the record reflect, we have reconvened Berkeley with all members present. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, to the republic, to one nation, under God, indivisible,
justice for all.
I may have some technical difficulties here, hold on a second. I think I might have some bandwidth issues. Can people hear me?
You're good, Mayor. Yes.
Okay, alright. Very good. Actually, on the wifi and not on the land, so please let me know if all of a sudden I freeze up and I'll, I will shift. Before we go to minutes for approval, I want to recognize or remember a few longtime Madison residents we've lost over the last few weeks. Carmine Sunny Catalano, lifelong Madison resident died January 2nd. He was eighty-nine, served the US Army prior to his honorable discharge, after which he served several years National Guard. Sunny was married to his wife Barbara on February twenty-fifth, nineteen fifty-six, and the young couple settled in Madison where they've lived ever since.
If you're speaking, you're frozen, Mazur.
Mayor, you should switch.
He's rejoining from another computer. He'll be on in just a minute.
I apologize, I am back in another location. And hopefully working much better. I don't know where I froze up so well. I do want to remember a few longtime Madison residents we've lost. Sunny Catalano, lifelong Madison resident, died on January 2nd, served in the Army prior to honorable discharge, after which he served several years in National Guard. Sunny was married to his wife Barbara on February twenty-fifth, nineteen fifty-six, and the young couple settled in Madison where they have lived ever since. Camille Sandello, lifelong Madison resident, died on January first. She was eighty-five, born in Morristown in nineteen thirty-six. She was raised in Madison with her brother. Camille was married to Ralph Dukie Sandello, and the couple settled in Madison where they raised their family. Nancy Curdo, longtime Madison resident and one of our crossing guards, died on December twentieth. She was seventy-two, born in Orange in nineteen forty-nine. She met her husband Anthony Curdo. Kurt Seymour's Cafe in their hometown of Livingston. Couple were married in nineteen sixty-seven and settled in Madison. She was a crossing guard at Green Village and Woodland Road for the children of Torrey J. School. And Karen Lee Drew, seventy-seven, died on December fifteenth. Setled in Madison forty-five years ago after living in Berkeley Heights. She attended All Souls Hospital School of Nursing in Morristown, graduated in sixty-five, and continued professional careers, registered nurse at All Souls and Overlook Hospitals. Before becoming a geriatric nurse for twenty-five years. And George Priscinos, longtime Madison resident, died in December fourteenth at age of eighty-nine, born in Athens, Greece. In nineteen thirty-two, immigrated to the United States from Greece and began his education career in tool and die making, eventually established his own tool and die business out of his home. After retiring here in Madison. So let us take a moment to remember Sunny Catalano, Camille Sandello, Nancy Curto, Karen Drew, and George Priscinos, and let us pass our thoughts on to the families and friends that they leave behind. Thank you. They have a motion for the executive minutes to December thirteenth, twenty twenty-one.
So moved.
Second.
There've already been discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And.
I'll abstain from that.
You don't have to buy Robert's rules unless there's a substantial difference, but we'll. Regular minutes for December thirteenth, twenty twenty-one.
So moved.
Oh, second.
Any counsel, any discussion or corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
For consistency, I'll abstain from that one, too.
Alright, sounds good. Alright, welcome all, and again, I apologize for technical difficulties. It was, laptop was working fine and all of a sudden lost connection, so here I am, back in the office. And for those that missed our reorganization meeting a week ago, Happy New Year. And since, first time since my first year as mayor, Austria Bailey is not at the table. And I have a feeling she may be home thinking that she's supposed to be somewhere at this very minute and wondering where she's supposed to be. But as I mentioned last Monday, Austria will continue to volunteer for Madison, and we all thank her for her past and continued dedication serving Madison and. Ironically, I almost skipped over the minutes because Austria was the one that always corrected them for us, so I'll make sure that gets done. It was a great holiday season in Madison from the parade through Christmas week. We were bustling, so thank you to all that supported our businesses and shop locally. And also in case you missed it at the reorganization meeting last week, Frank Davis from DPW was selected as employee the month of January, even though he retired as January eight, I'm sorry, January fourth. He started in nineteen eighty-four and since two thousand and two, he's been one keeping our streets clean, driving that sweeper in the early morning hours. And as I mentioned then, I don't know how many hour, how many miles he's covered on our streets. So after thirty-eight hours, he retired on the fourth, and we'd like to thank him and his family for their patience for his service to Madison. And if you see him in town, wish him good luck. I've seen him driving around his landscape truck. And while we did do the reorganization meeting in person and with a live stream, we have, at least for the month of January, return to virtual only. I am the only one sitting in Borough Hall right now. I was planning to be in council chambers, but now I'm in my office all by myself, not quite the same as having you in front of me. Right now are the modeling numbers indicate that the current spread through Omicron should drop within the next few weeks, but truly getting ahead of the pandemic takes all of us to do the right thing. So get vaccinated, get boosted, wear a mask when you're indoors and socially, social distancing cannot be maintained. Will soon be two years since this pandemic started, and I know we are all tired, but let's just hang in there. And we can get to the other side and hopefully maybe February will bring us back to council chambers. Appreciate your understanding through all this. Keep on smiling. Let's move on to reports from committees, utilities, Mr. Landrigan.
Thank you, Mayor. For the electric department, on Tuesday, December twelfth, the standby crew was called to an explosion on Danforth Road to power lines with tracking on the railroad's catenary line. The crew had to call New Jersey Transit to drop their line so we could repair our hours. On Tuesday, January, on December fourteenth, the standby crew was called to fifty-seven Sampson Avenue for only one half power. After checking out connection and lines, it was determined that the power issue was inside the home. On Monday, December twentieth, the crew was called to three fifty-four Valley Road for an emergency mark out for a sewer repair. On Tuesday, December twenty-first, the department was called out to Park Lane for no power. A squirrel had tripped its fuse. And finally, on Friday, December twenty-fourth, the standby crew was called to Weldy on Loveland Street. The generator backup had come on due to an electrical issue. For the water department, the Rosedale Avenue skating rink will be filled with water this week. Without catching any rain, any rainwater, it will take approximately two hundred and seventy-five gallons of drinking water to fill. The water department responded to sixty-six mark outs and fifteen water service shut offs. On Friday, January seventh, the water department assisted DPW with snow plowing to clear roads. And finally, radio readable water meters are still being installed regularly. Anyone interested in having their meter changed to an automated reading system should call the water department to schedule an appointment. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And public safety, Ms. Byrne.
Thank you, Mayor. From the fire department, during the month of December, the fire department responded to twenty-six general alarms, eighteen steel alarms, twenty-one investigations, and forty-two medical calls, for a total of one hundred and seven responses for the month of December. Fire prevention inspections were made and fifty-six resale smoke CO certificates were issued. For the calendar year twenty twenty-one, the fire department responded to two hundred and thirty-two general alarms, one hundred and seventy-five steel alarms, three hundred and eighty-two investigations, three hundred and eighty-seven medical calls, for a total of one thousand one hundred and seventy-six calls for assistance in twenty twenty-one. Congratulations to probationary firefighter Troy Behawick for obtaining his EMT certification. Troy completed three hundred hours of medical training, ten hours of hospital training, and successfully passed both the New Jersey and National EMT tests. From the police department, in December twenty twenty-one, Sergeant Ken Shannon completed a sixteen-week Command and Leadership Academy, formerly West Point Leadership, given by the New Jersey Chiefs of Police Association. Candidates with the greatest leadership potential are selected for this highly competitive program from municipal, county, state, and federal agencies from throughout the region. This course is dedicated to developing future law enforcement leaders. Congratulations Sergeant Shannon. On December seventeenth, Acting Lieutenant Craig Pirelli successfully completed the FBI's Executive Leadership Institute Training Course in Precipity. This course was the third of three training courses needed to be completed. Be awarded the FBI LITA Trilogy Award. The other two training courses completed last year were Supervisors Leadership Institute and Command Leadership Institute. These training courses are highly competitive and on a selection-only basis. And finally, in December twenty twenty-one, all Madison police personnel completed the department-wide ethics training given by Rogers Group LLC. This training is mandatory and all sworn officers are required to complete it as part of the department accreditation. That's it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And committee affairs, Mr. Hoover.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. The Downtown Development Commission will hold its annual reorganization meeting on Thursday, January twentieth via Zoom at seven fifteen PM. The DDC welcomes new members Christine Kozakowski, a Madison resident and owner of the Pink Pear, and Peter Woolley, Madison resident and the founding director, School of Public and Global Affairs at Fairleigh Dickinson University. Emails regarding online renewals of for commuter resident, residential tenant, and merchant employee parking permits have been sent to current permit holders. If you need to renew but have not received an email, please email parking@rosenet.org. For the Chamber of Commerce, mark your calendars, the Taste of Madison is scheduled for Monday, March twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-two, at Brookdale, Brook Lake Country Club. The Chamber's annual holiday party is being rescheduled for February, the date to be determined. That's all, Mayor.
Thank you. And now on to Finance Bureau Clerk, Ms. Cohen.
Thank you, Mayor. From the clerk's office, although we just had our reorg, the June seventh primary election, if you're interested in running the filing deadline for nomination petitions from municipal office is Monday, April fourth. Forms are available in the Borough Clerk's Office. Voter registration forms as well as mail-in ballot applications are also available in the Borough Clerk's Office or online at morriselections.org. And the Borough of Madison Identification Card Program is available with appointments every Tuesday and Thursday to any resident of the Borough of Madison able to provide the requirements for establishing his or her identity and residency as set forth in the ordinance. Forms are available online or in the Borough Clerk's Office. Please call nine seven three five nine three three zero four zero for more information. And from the CFO, a reminder from the Tax Department, the first quarter property taxes are due February first. Happily, in twenty twenty, we collected over ninety-eight point three percent of the property taxes. Special thanks to Chrissy and Hattie in the Tax Collection Department for doing such a great job under such challenging conditions. From Accounts Payable, the Admin's Budget and Accounts Payable System is currently closed as we finalize our year-end accounting. The system will be rolled over and opened by the end of the week. Therefore, the council does not have any vouchers to approve tonight. Now focusing on the budget, tonight we will continue our work on the twenty twenty-one budget. In December, we discussed the proposed five-year capital plan. This document is available on Rosenet if anyone would like to review it. We also passed a temporary budget at the reorganization meeting, which is standard practice amongst all New Jersey municipalities. We pass a temporary budget so that newly elected officials like Eric Range can be involved in the budget process. Bob Vogel, our engineer, will talk about the proposed twenty twenty-two road projects this evening. We introduced these funding ordinances for the road projects at the first meeting so we can get the projects out to bid early, which allows us to get work done over the summer rather than in the fall, once schools are back in session. The budget process revolves around the twenty fourteen Strategic Planning Guidelines that Ben Wolkowitz came up with and we're guided by this important document, Ben Wolkowitz and others. The budget process began last summer when administration started developing the capital and operating budgets with the department heads. Over the next eight council meetings, the governing body will discuss open space, capital, utilities, the municipal budget, and the department operating budgets. We have three budgets that we vote on and approve, water utility budget, the electric utility budget, and the current fund or main municipal budget. We are as transparent as we can be. It's an open process and voting on the budget is one of the most important actions the council takes. Anyone who has questions about this should visit the annual budget process page on Rosenet. The remaining budget schedule is as follows. At our next meeting, January twenty-fourth, we will have presentations from the Electric and Public Works Department heads and also review the utility budgets and utility fund balance or surplus. February fourteenth, we plan on having a discussion on the municipal budget and municipal surplus or fund balance. February twenty-second, we will have the presentations from the department heads that let us know what they did and what they will do. March fourteenth, we plan on having a second discussion on the draft budget, strategic planning guidelines, and alternate budget format will also be presented. If consensus exists, the council will authorize administration to draft the official state budget document. On March twenty-eighth, we will have our final budget discussion and hope to introduce the official state budget. We need to introduce the document by this meeting so we can stay within the state statutes and budget rules. Having said that, this year we are state understate review, a process that happens once every three years, so always possible that dates could change. On April twenty-fifth, after the minimum twenty-eight day period, council will hold its final hearing and hopefully adopt the budget. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Public Works and Engineering, Ms. Erlich.
Thank you, Mayor. The Borough Engineer advises that adjustments have been made to the road improvement capital budget line items for twenty twenty-two based on the budget introduction that we had at the December thirteenth council meeting and input from the governing body at that meeting. Tonight's agenda, as Ms. Cohen mentioned, includes two requests for appropriations to allow road improvement advertisement in February, bid opening in April, award in May, and construction in the summer months. Other non-seasonal budget items are expected to follow the regular budget review and appropriation schedules in the coming year. The engineering department is working to close out all completed twenty twenty-one construction projects and assemble final payment vouchers and security as applicable. They're also finalizing contracts for bid and reviewing new cooperative contracts for award. The DPW reports that they have finished installing new pedestrian signs with flashers on Luanaika Road, Glenwild Road, and Danforth Road. Leaf season is all completed and the DPW is now picking up Christmas trees. Please put your tree at the curb and they'll be around to pick it up. And the ice skating rink has been flooded and frozen. We ask your help in maintaining the rink in a safe condition with no debris thrown into the rink, whether it's flooded or frozen. We need everyone to please help out to keep our skating rink safe and usable this winter. All assaulters and plows were prepared ahead of the storm and as many of us saw, they went into action on Friday last week. And the sewer department repaired storm basins and will continue this work as weather permits. That is all from DPW.
Thank you. And health, Mr. Range. I mean, yes, right where I am.
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor. First of all, it is pet license season, so those renewal applications were sent in early December via email and US mail. Renewals must be completed by February first to avoid late fees and penalties. If you added a dog or cat to your household in twenty twenty-one and have not yet licensed that pet, now is the time to apply. If you've already applied for your twenty twenty-two license and have not yet received your tags, you can expect them later this month. Second, license renewals for Madison food establishments have also been mailed and are also due on February first. Now on to some COVID nineteen updates. As we are all abundantly aware, our region continues to be greatly impacted by the latest COVID surge fueled by the highly transmissible Omicron variant. According to the Madison Health Department's January fifth report, approximately twenty-five percent of Madison's one thousand eight hundred and sixty-eight confirmed cases of COVID were reported in the fourteen days from December twenty-second to January fifth. Early data suggests that Omicron is more transmissible, however, overall cases are less severe, particularly for those vaccinated and boosted than previous variants. While breakthrough cases of those who are fully vaccinated do appear more common in the face of the Omicron variant, well more than ninety percent of the recent hospitalizations and deaths continue to be among the unvaccinated. This once again reinforces the need for continued vaccination efforts. As a reminder, all residents five years and up are eligible for the COVID nineteen vaccine. The FDA and CDC have once again updated the guidance on eligibility for booster doses. At this time, all residents twelve and up, which is a change from sixteen, can receive a booster dose five months after their second dose of an mRNA vaccine or two months after their single dose of J and J. Retail pharmacies and healthcare providers have availability for the primary series boosters and pediatric doses. This week, the Madison Health Department is conducting a second dose clinic for those who received a first dose at the Madison Health Department Clinic in late December. Lastly, a reminder that in the face of this latest surge, Madison Health Department is asking all residents, visitors, and employees of Madison businesses and public spaces to mask up regardless of your vaccination status. To reinforce this message, last week, the department distributed new mask-up Madison signage for businesses. And remember, visit rosenet.org for updates on New Jersey's COVID nineteen vaccination program testing, including the Morris County Testing Facility that just reopened at CCM and other pandemic guidance. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And we're going to take a fifteen-second pause so I can run to the dais and grab my water that I left behind when I came to my office, so please, patience. I am back. So any communications or petitions?
Yes, Mayor. Mayor and council received an email dated January the eighth from Peter Osterberg of Longview Avenue regarding proposed signs at the Memorial Park skating rink.
Thank you very much. And now we are on to our first of two opportunities for public comment. This is limited to items that are on our agenda discussion and also the resolutions that are on a consent agenda. I will outline those resolutions in just a second. The two agenda discussions we have are the Climate Change Strategic Planning Initiative and Madison Environmental Commission presentation. There will be a second comment period later in the meeting when you may make comments or ask questions related to any topic that you'd like to cover. The resolutions that are on our consent agenda are Resolution thirty-seven, which is a settlement of tax appeal at thirty-nine Green Village Road. Resolution thirty-eight is recognizing global warming-induced climate change, support state goals to combat climate change, and this is about what you're going to hear about in just a few minutes. Resolution thirty-nine is ratifying the appointment of intern Nicholas Taylor as part-time unpaid intern for the police department. Resolution forty is approving a special event permit to allow use of Memorial Park parking area by Karen Giardano. Resolution forty-one, approving appointments to office emergency management, and this is OEM Coordinator John Rafter, OEM Deputy Coordinator and Public Information Officer, Acting Captain Joseph Longo, OEM Assistant Deputy Coordinator, Acting Chief John Misha. Resolution forty-two is ratifying the appointment of intern Ryan John Shepherd as part-time unpaid intern for the police department. Resolution forty-three is authorizing contract for diesel fuel through Morris County Co-op Pricing Council not to exceed sixty thousand dollars funded through the twenty twenty-two budget. Resolution forty-four is authorizing contract for motor gasoline through the Morris County Co-op not to exceed a hundred and fifty thousand dollars also funded through the twenty twenty-two budget. Resolution forty-five is ratifying purchase order contract for rock salt, Atlantic salt of Lowell, Massachusetts under the co-op contract not to exceed a hundred and twenty thousand dollars also funded under the budget. Resolution forty-six is a word of purchase order contract for EnviroBryne liquid melting agent to the Reed Systems of Ellenville, New York, under the Morris County Co-op. Resolution forty-seven is appointing alternate commissioner of Morris County Municipal Joint Insurance Fund. This is Christine Mahler from our text department. So those are the resolutions to make comment on. If anyone wishes to comment on any of those resolutions or are two agenda items, please raise your hand. If you wish to comment on other topics, again, that will come up later. And as always, try to keep your comments to three minutes, but we'll be given a one-minute grace and we'll have you stop at four minutes. And Alex Jennings.
Hi, this is Alex Jennings, Six Edge Wood Road. I did want to comment in support of the Climate Action Resolution that's on the agenda for. I did want to comment in support of the climate action resolution that's on the agenda for later. I'm not sure that I will be able to stay on the Zoom long enough to comment after the presentation, so I just thought I'd take the opportunity to comment now. I've had a chance to hear Council Councilmember Ehrlich speak about the Climate Change Strategic Planning Initiative in the past week, and I'm just wanted to say how I'm very much in favor of the resolution. I think it's so important that climate issues rise to a strategic level for planning and budgeting purposes, and climate impact belongs at this level of government, and I'm very grateful that the council has recognized this. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Alex. Anyone else wishing to be heard, please raise your hand. Tom Harlan Putus, please. State your name, your town, and the agenda item or resolution you want you want to comment on.
Tom Harlan Putus, twenty-seven Palmeroy Road in Madison, Mayor. Hello, everybody. Happy New Year. Mayor, can I just comment about something that was made by the council on some of their presentations, or should I wait till later for that?
That would come up later, yeah.
Okay, then I, the only other thing I was going to comment on was the tax appeal. And I think I heard you mention quickly that it's for something on Green Village Road, so if it's a private resident, I'm not really interested in hearing, but if it was some commercial property, I was just curious to know what their appeal was and what there is, you know, what they what they received as a as a reduction in their taxes, if it's commercial. Thank you.
Thank you. We can give you some background of that in just a second. Anyone else wishing to be heard, raise your hand. So Jim, you want to handle the tax appeal, or Ray?
Jim can do it, Mayor. Mayor, this is the Green Villa Apartment, the old brick building across from St. Vincent's that was recently renovated, and then they had fire and then re-renovated. The assessed value had an implied bill price of over close to eight million dollars. And after calculating rent rolls, there's an entire process of looking at rent rolls and expenses and alike and capitalization rates and things like that. It's a fairly standard process for apartment buildings. It was determined that there would be a step down. There's no pain that the borough needs to make in any sort of tax appeal. It's just a step down for forward years going out as a step down of eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars to implied market value of seven point one million dollars.
Thank you, and as a reminder to the public that tax appeals for residents, you do go through a process of comparable sales and so on. It's a comparison for commercial properties, including larger apartment buildings. It is, there's a whole lot of more factors such as income costs and other things. That's where this was calculated, and we've come up with a settlement as pointed out that was going forward and no money is having to leave the borough. And seeing no other hands, we close this part of the meeting and we will move on to the Climate Change Strategic Planning Initiative, which Alex Jennings did a fine introduction, so I will hand it right off to Rachel.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen so you can see this presentation. Okay, there we go.
Yep.
So good evening to all. Tonight, I'm very excited to present a strategic planning initiative for climate action in Madison. Tonight's Resolution thirty-eight addresses climate action and the planning and budgeting process for our borough. I want to start by acknowledging and celebrating the fact that Madison is a leader in sustainability initiatives. The borough has shown leadership in energy transition and conservation through installing public electric EV chargers, rolling out a smart metering program for water and electricity utilities, and investing in both hard and non-wires infrastructure for our utilities. Although it's not on the slide, I want to note that our municipally-sponsored affordable housing development will bring forty-four units of high-performance, energy-efficient, one hundred percent affordable housing to the borough. The project is targeting passive house certification, the gold standard in energy efficiency and occupant comfort. Madison's two thousand and twenty master plan, the result of a year-long stakeholder engagement process, is guided by a commitment to energy efficiency, sustainability, smart development, and resiliency. And we have two appointed volunteer groups, the Madison Environmental Commission and the Sustainable Madison Advisory Committee, who work in partnership to advance Madison's goals for conservation and environmental protection. In fact, tonight Claire Whitcomb, the Chair of the Environmental Commission, were making a great presentation on the master plan and the key role of Madison's new environmental checklist for site plan approval and new construction. Meanwhile, thanks to the hard work of the Sustainable Madison Advisory Committee, Madison is a two-time recipient of the Sustainability Champion Award, receiving the most points from sustainable jersey for a medium-sized town in both two thousand and thirteen and two thousand and twenty. So taken all together, Madison is extremely fortunate. We have abundant and talented volunteers. We have strong ties between the Environmental Commission and the Sustainable Madison Advisory Committee. And we have a mayor, a governing body, administration, and department heads who all champion and support sustainability efforts. We also acknowledge that Madison is vulnerable to climate threats. We are living in a changed climate with rising temperatures and increased storm events due to greenhouse gas emissions. In New Jersey, we've had forty-two extreme weather events since nineteen eighty. Annual precipitation has increased eight percent in the last ten years, and the temperature has risen three degrees since nineteen hundred. Rains are projected to be overwhelming in the winter and spring, while higher temperatures will bring us drought conditions in the summer and fall. And we have a growing threat of devastation from hurricanes like Sandy, Ida, and bigger storms to come. So we know in New Jersey and nationwide that the long-term economic costs of no action will substantially outweigh the costs of aggressive near-term climate action. So what do we mean when we say climate action? Climate action is recognized as an organized response to climate change to reduce greenhouse gas emissions, which are the source of global heating and climate change, and to build resiliency to adapt to a changed climate. Governor Murphy has been focused on climate action. New Jersey has enacted ambitious legislation to reduce greenhouse gas emissions and help communities adapt to the changing climate. In the last few years, we've seen the following actions take place at the state level. The Global Warming Response Act was signed into law in July of two thousand and nineteen. This law mandates that the state reduce greenhouse gas emissions to eighty percent by the year two thousand and fifty, also known as the eighty-by-fifty goal. An executive order two seventy-four established a reduction target of fifty percent by two thousand and thirty, which will strengthen our path to meeting that eighty-by-fifty goal. The Energy Master Plan issued by the Board of Public Utilities to help New Jersey meet the eighty-by-fifty goal is one of the most sweeping green energy initiatives in the country. And the DEP's climate change resiliency strategy was issued to help state and local governments integrate climate resilience and adaptation into local land use planning. So how can Madison's ongoing work support these state laws and climate goals? The Energy Master Plan shows that community-level action is necessary to achieve New Jersey's clean energy goals. And so tonight we are proposing Resolution thirty-eight to incorporate climate action at the strategic level to help inform the borough's planning and budgeting process. This is an opportunity to show municipal leadership in climate action and to be proactive and get ahead of coming legislative requirements. Leaders of the Environmental Commission and Sustainable Madison, with support from the mayor, council, and borough administration, have drafted the Climate Action Resolution to do the following things. First, it acknowledges that we urgently need to address climate change by significantly reducing greenhouse gases from burning fossil fuels. We need to build resiliency and to protect public health, the economy, and our natural and built environment by strengthening our community against climate impacts. It supports New Jersey state climate goals that require municipal level action. And the resolution introduces the climate action process, which is a strategic planning initiative and an annually occurring review to provide continuity with a goal and measurement-based program for climate action. So the climate action process incorporates greenhouse gas reduction and climate resiliency into the borough's planning and budget processes follows. Here's how it works. So first, it'll set municipal level climate goals based on New Jersey state targets. It will identify and measure key climate metrics each year in Madison to assess whether the borough is on track to meet those goals. And if there are gaps in meeting those goals, the process will be used to recommend climate actions or initiatives for the borough to consider to help us stay on target. Through tonight's Resolution thirty-eight, we propose to implement a pilot program for two thousand and twenty-two. It will be used to inform the coming two thousand and twenty-three budget cycle, which starts this fall. So to break it down, here's how the climate action process will unfold for this pilot program. First, municipal level climate goals extrapolated from New Jersey state goals will be proposed at the start of the pilot pilot program in the next couple of months. And during the spring, the focus will be on measuring key climate metrics, comparing them to our municipal level goals, and developing recommendations together with the administration and department heads. Recommendations for actions or initiatives, including the estimated financial impact, will be presented to council during the summer. And then before the start of the next budget cycle, council will weigh and prioritize desired actions and advise department heads for planning purposes in the coming year. For the two thousand and twenty-two program, an ad hoc committee is proposed. It would be comprised at a minimum of the members I've listed on the slide. I want to note that Sustainable Madison has laid the groundwork for this process already through the energy and climate actions that they undertake as part of the Sustainable Jersey Certification. The Green Team undertakes a lot of different actions and initiatives, but it does include tracking energy and climate progress via things like fleet inventories, measuring natural gas usage, and tracking municipal and community carbon footprints. And then part of the committee's task, the ad hoc committee's task, will be to make recommendations for who should participate and how to implement this process in two thousand and twenty-three and beyond. So fortunately, the state has created programs and resources for energy and resiliency planning at the local level. The New Jersey Board of Public Utilities created the Community Energy Plan. This is a program with a template for municipalities to implement best practices for lowering local greenhouse gas emissions. And the energy plan is based on the strategies in the state's energy master plan. And for adapting to the reality of a changed climate, the DEP issued the Local Planning for Climate Change Toolkit, which is meant to help state and local government climate action with tools for local land use planning. So the pilot program will use these state programs and tools to document proposed strategies, goals, and recommended actions for the council and administration to consider. We have a model for this kind of process in the borough. It's the climate action process is modeled on the Borough's Strategic Planning Initiative, which implemented a goals and measurements approach to decision-making. For a little bit of background on the Strategic Planning Initiative, in two thousand and fourteen and fifteen, the Committee on Budget and Finance proposed certain budget guidelines, including an annual reporting process for the CFO to show how the municipal budget was meeting the borough's financial goals each year. And the Strategic Committee on Utilities proposed a process for the borough to compile data on reliability and rates for our utilities, analyze the results, and adjust the budget accordingly. So in a similar fashion, at the start of the initiative, the Climate Action Committee will propose municipal level goals based on New Jersey state energy and residency legislation. The goals will be presented to the council, and council will be asked to adopt them via resolution, just as was done for the Strategic Planning Guidelines. And like those guidelines, the goals will be a flexible framework to guide the borough in budgeting and decision-making. Each year, the process will measure the borough's progress toward meeting its climate goals and recommend new or adjusted actions for consideration. So for the next portion of the presentation, I'll share some examples of this goals, measurements, and actions approach, but before I move on, I'm happy to answer any questions about the resolution or the climate action process so far.
Any questions, Deb?
Great job, Rachel. I know you and I have talked about this several times already. Is the ad hoc committee for this year, which I think is a great mix of people, are they going to also do community outreach? Or is that something they'll decide that we'll do for twenty-three?
So because we have a somewhat compressed time scale to get the pilot program off the ground in time, believe it or not, for the two thousand and twenty-three budget, even though we're now just in the middle of the two thousand and twenty-two budget. The idea is that for the ongoing implementation of the climate action process, the climate team envisions a robust stakeholder process to solicit really diverse perspectives and input from the borough. And Resolution thirty-eight actually acknowledges that and the importance of engaging homeowners, businesses, renters, institutions, and other stakeholders throughout the borough and climate action. So I think an important part of what the ad hoc committee will be tasked with doing is recommending a process for that outreach and engaging stakeholders across the borough as part of the ongoing implementation going forward.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions, comments on that section? All right, go ahead, Rachel, for.
Okay. Okay, so I'm going to share some example strategies, goals, and actions that could be proposed through the two thousand and twenty-two pilot program. We have state goals from the Energy Master Plan in the subsequent slides, corresponding Madison measurements, and some example actions, kind of like a menu of initiatives from the BPU's Community Energy Plan that can help municipalities achieve climate goals. Throughout those initiatives, I think it's worth noting that Madison is already undertaking a number of those items, so those are shown with a check mark, those that are already being measured by the Sustainable Madison Green Team. And I just wanted to repeat this great quote that was passed forward to me during this process, which sounds simple, but is really the heart of the problem. To fight climate change, first you need to measure it, and so that's really what this process starts to do. So the first strategy in the New Jersey State Energy Master Plan is to reduce greenhouse gas emissions in transportation. What this chart shows is the statewide goals to substantially reduce emissions from transportation by two thousand and fifty. And then overlayed on that, you see data from Madison for two eighteen, sorry, twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, and two thousand and twenty. That's circled in the blue circle in the middle. The Sustainable Madison Fleet Inventory found that the municipal fleet's greenhouse gas emissions dropped from six hundred and eleven tons to five hundred and thirty tons over those three years. So our trend looks good, but unfortunately, the two thousand and twenty data was likely reduced by COVID, so we might expect to see some uptick or correction in that in subsequent years. The entire New Jersey transportation sector generates forty million metric tons of greenhouse gases annually. And the number for all of Madison is about sixty-six thousand tons in two thousand and eighteen and two thousand and nineteen, and about fifty-three thousand tons of greenhouse gases for two thousand and twenty during this COVID period. But you can see just by plotting these three data points that generally speaking, our emissions are dropping, and we can use the New Jersey statewide goals to plot, of course, to continue reducing our greenhouse gas emissions from transportation between now and two thousand and fifty. Once we set those goals, we can review every year and see if we're moving them. So how are we going to measure to see our progress? Here are a couple of metrics that Sustainable Madison is already tracking. We can undertake an electric vehicle census for the whole borough, including privately-owned vehicles. And we can conduct a municipal fleet inventory, which we already do, to see what the emissions from the municipal fleets of current inventory is and create a schedule to phase out greenhouse gas rather internal combustion engine equipment and start to phase in more and more electric vehicles, light duty and heavy duty over time. So once we have the measurements and we gauge our progress, we can start to propose actions to take if we are not meeting our targets or if we need to make adjustments in the coming years. So these are the Community Energy Plan Initiatives in the BPU work plan for creating an energy plan for your community. So I've checked off the ones here that are already being undertaken in the borough. That includes training first responders on electric vehicles and electric vehicle supply equipment, purchasing alternative fuel vehicles. As many of us know, we have hybrid vehicles already in the police department and in the construction enforcement fleet. We are working to improve municipal fleet efficiency, and we have potentially the highest number of public EV chargers per capita in New Jersey right now with our high number installed in public parking lots throughout the borough. So these are some sample actions that are proposed. As you can see, we're doing some of them already. And the committee might find that there are additional actions that we could undertake to encourage uptake of electric vehicles and incentivize adoption for private owners in the borough. Here's another example. The Energy Master Plan Strategy Four is to reduce greenhouse gas emissions from buildings. So this chart shows several pathways to realizing significant statewide reductions by two thousand and fifty. So this chart shows several pathways to realizing significant statewide reductions by two thousand and fifty. That's the overall blue lines that are sloping down to the two thousand and fifty target in the corner. In the top left, you can see the two thousand and eighteen through two thousand and twenty Madison municipal usage of natural gas. Sustainable Madison found that it generated between five hundred and five hundred and twenty-seven tons of greenhouse gases every year. Again, the two thousand and twenty data was likely affected by changes in use due to COVID. And this is another chart where we can plot our year-by-year progress to reducing greenhouse gas emissions and compare it to statewide goals for greenhouse gas reductions. Some metrics that we can use to measure our progress annually are measuring municipal natural gas and electricity usage. And we can also measure borough-wide natural gas and electricity usage. And these are metrics that Sustainable Madison is already tracking. So if we need to continue to incentivize the borough and municipality to reduce greenhouse gas emissions from from buildings, there's a number of actions that we can undertake. Some of them that are already in progress are checked here. And then some additional actions the committee might suggest, such as incentivizing home electrification, providing green building training for borough staff and board members, such as planning and zoning board members, the other ways to help continue to drive down greenhouse gas emissions from our buildings. So this has been a high-level introduction to the climate action process and the two thousand and twenty-two pilot program. There's a lot of information in a short amount of time. And so if there's any other questions, I'm happy to answer them now.
And Rachel, thank you for all the work. Eric?
I'm really thrilled that Madison wants to continue to be a leader here, although I'm curious if there are other municipalities with similar programs underway or in place already.
So according to Sustainable Jersey and independent municipal reporting, there are not too many towns that have a climate action plan in place. So far, only Hoboken, Jersey City, Woodbridge, Trenton, and Princeton have a climate action plan. I think it's really worth pointing out, though, that there are fourteen municipalities in our region that are participating in a joint effort right now to develop a climate action template to create a package program that municipalities can adopt to to follow along with the process that we're proposing. Chatham and Madison are largely leading that planning and production effort for that template right now. It's hoped that Madison will be a case study for the template and for that process. And we heard recently that Chatham Borough is planning to follow in our footsteps in the next couple of months. But I think it's really exciting that Madison is leading the way with this and that we're committed to collaborating with our neighbors to drive action in area towns, as we've done with other regional sustainability initiatives like the plastic bag ban, for instance.
Great, thank you.
And through my weekly calls, I'm going to be working with our neighboring towns also on getting going. And I've noticed in our attendees, we have a representative from the Chatham Borough environmental commission. So it's good to see that they're listening in and that to see how it goes. And I want to emphasize, Rachel, not only on the all the work you did to pull this together, but your statement that you need to be able to measure it and the army of volunteers that has spent so many hours of gathering this data to put us in this position allows us to lead the way and set the example, because if we couldn't measure it, it would be just I was going to say blowing smoke, but that would be the wrong metaphor at this point.
Any other questions?
So this is a resolution thirty-eight on the consent, which is just step one. We will put put together the pilot program and again, set over five hundred and sixty-five municipalities in the state of New Jersey we need to set the trend here.
Mayor, I want to tag on to your thank yous for just a moment before I leave the virtual podium. I want to thank you and our CFO, Jim Burnett, and our administrator, Ray Cody, for participating in the development of this process and providing really valuable feedback. I want to thank Councilwoman Deb Cohen for co-sponsoring the climate action resolution. Thank you, Deb, for your early support of this. And I want to thank all of my council colleagues for your support of this important initiative. And as the mayor said, I want to give big round of applause to the volunteers of the Environmental Commission and Sustainable Madison Advisory Committee, especially the climate leaders, Claire Whitcomb, Trina Malik, Kathleen Cacavalli, and the intrepid Peter Freed, for your vision and your leadership in bringing climate action to Madison. Thank you all for your hard work to get us to this milestone action tonight.
Good work, Rachel. Great work.
Great work.
All right. And speaking of Claire Whitcomb, we will move on to our next agenda item. And the common theme for tonight, Environmental Commission presentation, this relates to how we've put together a checklist and to to guide our zoning board of adjustment and planning board and other with development in various developments in Madison. So Claire, is there anyone else that needs to be promoted with you or just?
Oh, just me for the moment.
Okay, so it sounds good. All right.
All right. So let me just figure out. Um, thank you, Rachel. That was phenomenal. That's really great. And just one comment to Eric's question. I mean, Princeton has the gold standard for climate action. They have, you know, we had them present their climate action plan in January of two thousand and twenty, and I think it influenced all of us and kicked off the work of the multi-town groups, but they have a lot of paid staff and they got a huge grant from Robert Wood Johnson. And you know, we're all doing this ourselves and it's it 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 just takes a sea change in attitude and it's really working. Okay, um, I have to share my screen. Okay, is this working? Can you guys see this?
Yep.
All right, I try this and wait. Can you see when I change the the slides? Okay, all right. So, um, the Environmental Commission is, one of our roles is to review site plans, typically commercial plans. This is not about your your deck or your pool or whatever. It's it's larger scale development and we receive the plans from Francis Boardman and the projects go to the zoning and planning board. And we've been doing this for years. Okay, but before I start, I want to say that we had a really good year in two thousand and twenty-one. This is, we did a lot of multi-town things. This is the EV Expo organized by Peter Freed that we sponsored with the Chatham's, the yard sale, the swap one and Anjek Award, the Drew Forest has eleven thousand signatures. The Green Vision Forum is going to happen again in March, and we had fourteen thousand native plants sold in a ten-town sale. And that was in the spring and in the fall, we had the Eco Garden Tour, which was a huge success. So as as you noted, some of my stuff is going to overlap slightly with Rachel, but I'll just cruise over it. But sixty-six percent of Madison's carbon footprint comes from the built environment. And so that puts site plans and Environmental Commission comments and the kind of choices we make in new buildings right in the crosshairs of climate action. And one thing we've learned in participating in all these multi-town groups is it is really frustrating work because at a local level, we cannot require anything that's higher than the state standards, which aren't all that progressive. And I think there's legislation being worked on to redo the the housing code and I think it's an excellent excellent action for the League of Conservation Voters, and I've written to them several times. But meanwhile, this is where we are. What's really helpful in Madison is our master plan and Rachel referenced this, but you know, it calls in very strong language for us to reduce our carbon emissions, be a model for energy efficiency. It states that when there are variances needed, it encourages the use of green infrastructure. It encourages sustainable design and green building practices. And this is was approved in December of two thousand and twenty. So two thousand and twenty-one is the first year we've test-driven what this means in real life at zoning and planning boards. And this is my synopsis to the best of my ability about what's happened. Because there was a new master plan, we created, we, the borough, created a new environmental checklist. An environmental checklist is voluntary, but developers have to fill it out as part of their completeness package. And so it triggers the idea that Madison is setting the bar high. And it prompts more thorough discussions in in zoning and planning board meetings because it singles out, like you can spot the absence of innovation really pretty easily. So I'm not going to go through all these, but it's it's like a four-page doc. Um, so here are the MEC's rules to live by, and I will stress that these are just recommendations, but that doesn't mean we don't believe in them a hundred percent. So really, no impervious coverage variances without a plan for some sort of way to balance that. You know, it could be pervious paving like Realogy, Atlantic Health in Maristown. And Jocelyn Toro of the zoning board pointed out to me that behind the apartments on Cook Avenue, there's pervious paving. There's a green roof, rain gardens and meadows at Realogy. We're going to add rain gardens in the Cook Avenue parking lot and a blue roof, which is basically something that like collects water and filters it down to the aquifer at a rate where it's not going to flood anything, is being discussed at Three Central Avenue, which is the proposed apartment building where Central and Main was. Um, why do we need to worry about this? Rachel talked about this a lot. This is the after Ida at the Drew Forest where the verteplews came back and verteplews are spring areas that that fill with water and the forest is just an example of how much water there was. But climate change is actually changing the atmosphere, the which currently holds more water. So this is what's leading to flash floods. If you've ever tried to walk in a rainstorm, the sidewalks flood downtown. And the problem with flooding is that stormwater carries when it crosses asphalt, it acquires pollutants and it carries them into our aquifer streams and rivers. And more more often, another problem is that we don't recapture that stormwater. We're dependent on the aquifer. And so if it goes into like a stormwater drain, it goes out to the Pacific or some other area where we don't get the drinking water. So rain gardens and trees purify water, tree canopies disperse rainfall. Um, our number two rule to live by is to electrify buildings and provide solar-ready construction. You don't actually have to put the panels in. You just have to know that they can go in, which is a discussion we were having last week at the with the library. Electrification is is just basically the way things are going to go if you want to have clean energy because already the power grid is being transformed. And I think Jim Burnett can attest to this is the power that we're we're buying is increasingly greener and it's through no choice of our own. It's just how it's coming in. And New Jersey's Energy Master Plan is calling for ninety percent electrification by two thousand and fifty. There are more wind and solar are coming online. So here's a really good success story. Starbucks, which is going to go to the vacant drive-through bank in in the Staples Mall, they're going to hop across the street and create an adaptive reuse of the bank. They, in the recent December ninth zoning board hearing, agreed to electrify the building. They, their company with a huge steep climate commitment for carbon emission and water, water use. So that was very exciting. Angelica Three, which is a townhouse that structure that's going to be built at on Elm Street, uphill from the train tracks, agreed to electric infrastructure. And so did the movie theater complex. And on Madison Avenue, there's an applicant considering flush mounted solar panels. Natural gas really, it takes a while to grok, just kind of like how complex and how difficult it is to natural gas is just worse the more you know about it. It leaks methane from the fracking field to your house. Gas hookups were just banned in New York City. It's considered worse than coal when you count the methane emissions and a group in Massachusetts started mapping methane leaks and they had found four thousand, a thousand of them were super emitters. Okay, so we, our our third rule to live by is less asphalt, less lawn, and a hundred percent native plants. This is never going to happen in a super purist way, but law, the basic thing to recognize is that lawns are monocrop. They don't provide any thing for bees and butterflies, and they drain poorly into the aquifer. Insects are routinely killed by chemicals. Birds eat insects, so we need to keep insects alive. Essential reading is Nature's Best Hope by Douglas Tallamy. There's a lot of videos on the web. If you want us to do a like cheat course in an hour, you'll just kind of like have your eyes changed about what we can each do in our yards, which is, you know, having a small area of native plants and making a huge difference. Again, we're going to have a multi-town native plant sale in in on Earth Day, I believe, and two thousand plants were sold in Madison. The group is planning to sell, I think, twenty, order twenty-one thousand native plants. Basically, native plants are a little hard to buy at local nurseries. So this is a huge service to our region. Okay, so conserve water. It's interesting. Low-flow toilets and water-saving fixtures were like a no-brainer at Starbucks when we went to the affordable housing meeting with the planning board, the the developer said, oh, yeah, they're standard. So this seems to be a good thing. And drip irrigation is planned at thirty-two thirty-six Elm. Um, we've talked a lot about EV charging and we've passed an ordinance in town that's going to based on the state model. So again, this is where the state is leading and we're we're implementing things to match, which is a relief because we don't have to figure it out. So independent of the the ordinance and its coming regulations, two EVs charging stations will be installed at Starbucks. That was a priority for the zoning board. And another strategy is just to like future-proof your construction so that conduit for charging stations is going to be installed at several locations, including the movie theater project. So I think that's it. If you want to really get to know us, you can sign up for our email updates. We meet the fourth Thursday of the month. We have a not too frequent, but really fun newsletter. And thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Claire, for your work. And before I forget, I want to remind the public that both this presentation and the presentation that Rachel presented will be on RoseNet. So you can, it's a lot of information and in a way, almost information overload, because there's more facts in there and they put that in there so you can look at it. And just to reinforce the, Claire, you mentioned that the checklist is not mandatory, but the checklist checklist itself has to be done. The items that are listed on there are not necessarily required, but what it does, and we talked about this when we approved it, the checklist, it it does a couple of things. One, it gets a builder or developer thinking about this is the way Madison operates. These are the things we're looking at. And we appreciate. And number two, and the stronger part of it is when it goes ahead of a land use board, whether it's a zoning board of adjustment or the planning board, there's a whole list of things that they have checked or haven't checked. And that becomes part of the negotiation. Yes, you need a variance, but let's let's talk about things you can do to make Madison even better with a full electrification or going above and beyond with rain gardens or whatever it might be. So it is a very valuable tool. Other comments or questions? All right, you know, it's, these two presentations have set a great tone for two thousand and twenty-two. So it's
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you for all your work and your, all the volunteers behind you. All right, we will now move on to All right, we will now move on to this normally would be ordinances for hearing, but this is the first meeting of the year, so there are none. So we're now on to our second of two invitations for public comment, this is when you may comment on any topic. Raise your hand by clicking on the hand, or if you're on a phone, hit star nine. When you are recognized, state your name and your town and try to keep your comments to three minutes, but I will give you a one-minute grace and you'll be stopped at four minutes. And we have a whole host of hands up there right now, so Christine Pepper, happy new year and welcome.
On you, okay. Hello, Christine Hepburn from One Lightning Bug Hollow Road, Hardwick, New Jersey. First quick shout out to Austria, who's, I finally remember running for her first council race in pre-estar times. She's done amazing work forever. And I want to thank you, Mayor, for your wonderful and wise comments at the January 3 reorg meeting. I want to thank all of you up there for helping to make Madison a municipal leader in so many ways. The Climate Change Strategic Planning Initiative that Councilwoman Earl presented is just the latest very impressive thing that Madison is doing. And I do mean impressive, I am in Florida for the winter and in Florida, well, you know what, I won't even go there. About climate, climate change. Your Madison's efforts to lower greenhouse gas emissions from all different sources are extremely important if we are going to avoid horrible effects of climate change. And it's not easy, and I thank you for leading the way. There is something else on kind of the other side of the ledger of emissions that you and other towns can do that will help mitigate climate change and that is relatively easy, and that is, don't cut down trees. Or I should say, don't allow them to be cut down, especially large trees. As you know, but for the record, trees remove the dominant greenhouse gas, carbon dioxide from the air and store it for decades and even centuries. Trees in the US actually remove 11% of our of our greenhouse emissions. And they think that could be much higher, a much higher rate in northeast forests that are very effective. Turns out, not surprisingly, there's been a lot written about alleviating climate change from planting trees on a grand scale, that's not really relevant to Madison. But but it follows that one thing that all areas should do now is keep the trees you have, keep all the trees you can, but especially the trees in intact forests, peer-reviewed research is clear. As trees age and grow larger, they sequester more and more carbon. And in fact, they store perhaps half of the carbon in forest soil. Moreover, intact forests take up the most carbon, one study recently found that intact forests hold 40% more carbon than tree plantations with their younger and less diverse trees. So think about that, you could plant loads of new trees. But if large and and trees from intact forests are removed, the their ability to uptake, take out of the air, carbon dioxide cannot be replaced in our lifetime, in our children's lifetime, or in fact, possibly not ever. Now, the Drew Forest, you knew I would get there.
And you have one minute.
Contains the largest trees in the region, it is an intact forest. So this is my last sentence, if Drew University ends up asking for rezoning in order to destroy and develop rather than sell and preserve the forest, this carbon removal service alone is reason enough for you to say, no. I'm raising my glass to a new year where in which Drew gets funding and you preserve the Drew Forest, thank you.
Thank you very much, Chris. And Tom.
Hello again, Mayor and Council. One question I had on your introduction of ordinances, there's two appropriations there for road improvements or reconstruction, is that the only road improvements that we have proposed for the year, or is there going to be more before you get to the final budget presentation in April? Just to curiosity and not really you know, concerned about, I know you guys have been taking good care of the borough's roads and you have a very long-term plan, which has been working well. And I want to also move towards the the new resolution for climate change, Rachel did a great presentation, and I know that all of you put a lot of effort into this, it was a lot of detail in that presentation. I assume it's going to be available somewhere on RoseNet so that we can look at it, it was hard to keep track of it. Just because because there was so much detail on it to catch all the points. Oh, one thing I I didn't notice, and it might have been there, is just the aspect of how we're going to promote more solar, I know we we talked about, you talked about it in another term, Rachel, electrifying in homes or electrifying the borough, so I assume that that also means just promoting solar as part of electric electrification. And if that's what it is, that's great, I don't know exactly how we're going to implement the changes, but I know we're moving in that direction. And then I had commented on this before. Is it possible for us to give some incentives to residents or to developers if they're going to move forward with some of the green initiatives that are on your checklist? It could be some small savings or some some creative incentive that would make them more inclined to participate. And then the checklist that you're making available, the way I understood it is just for development or for developers? Or is that something that's going to be distributed to the entire borough, to all the homeowners? You know, through utility bill mailings or an email distribution list? There was a lot of good environmental incentives, applications there that we should all be doing in our homes, you guys have some some really good options for us to be very conservation oriented in the way that we live. So, but that's about it, thanks so much, I'm looking forward to seeing you guys implement it more, if I can help in any way. Feel free to ask me, I have a lot of these initiatives in my own life already. I'm going to be using some of your solar parking stations around the borough, I guess at the new Starbucks. If I stop there long enough to charge up a little bit. But that's pretty exciting, hopefully a lot of a lot of places do that. Thanks again. All right, Mayor, you got me.
There you go, thank you, Tom, you made it. On the roads, when we're going to introduce the respective ordinances for the roads, and so we'll outline the roads that are listed in there and answer that question. Yeah, I think you've got a lot of great comments related to incentives and distribution, all this information, and I think it's been brought up that this is just the beginning of the work and figured out ways to incentivize people to do the right thing, we will certainly have discussions and have that out there. Right now, one of the incentives for developers is you're asking for variance and we may get your variance, but you may also be incorporating some of the extra things, especially if it relates to impervious coverage, so and Claire mentioned the newsletter that the Environmental Commission does, and I think I'm sure she'll be sharing the various information that was presented and the checklist. You made a good point, it's a valuable tool, even if you're not planning on doing, putting in the application for a land use to a land use board to know about using native plants and various other things, I think is very helpful, so I'll encourage our Environmental Committee Commission to share share that information. And now we'll bring up Kathy Cacavale.
Good evening, excuse me, Kathleen Cacavale, 82 Central Avenue, Madison. Speaking as a resident of Madison and as Chair of the Sustainable Madison Advisory Committee, I just want to reiterate my personal support for the climate resolution and the support of the Sustainable Madison Advisory Committee. Thank you.
Thank you. And now we'll bring up Chris Cultus.
Hi, everyone, my name is Chris Cultus, I'm a Drew alum, I graduated in the spring of 2021. And I'm now a graduate student at Colorado State University. Entering the new year, I couldn't help but reflect on what a year 2021 was. It was a year that started off filled with concern over how COVID would affect my final semester at Drew and the threat that the forest was being sold for development ended with optimism, thanks to all of you. At the beginning of 2021, I was terrified for the future of the forest. Rumors began circulating about the forest being sold for development, I felt scared and hopeless. As many of you may know, the forest is where my passion for ecological restoration began. With the incredible guidance and mentoring from Dr. Sarah Webb, the forest served as an incredible place that helped further my knowledge and pursue a career in ecological restoration. Because of all of you, I'm hopeful the legacy of the forest will continue and that there will be many other students like myself and those before me that are inspired by the forest and inspired by all of you. What started as a year filled with gloom ended filled with hope. Thank you all so much for your incredible support to help save the forest, and thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Anyone else wishing to be heard, please raise your hand now. Seeing none, I close this part of the meeting, we now move on to introductory ordinances, will the clerk please read the statement?
The ordinance is scheduled for first reading, have a hearing date set for January the 24th, 2022. All will be published in the Madison Eagle, posted on the bulletin board and made available to members of the public requesting copies.
I call the board, this is for first reading, ask the borough clerk to read said ordinances by title, ordinance 1-2022.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $840,000 from the General Capital Improvement Fund for the 2022 road reconstruction projects related work and miscellaneous projects.
Mayor, I move ordinance 1-2022.
Second.
And to Tom's question, this is funding reconstruction for Shady Lawn Drive of $380,000, Norman Circle $300,000. And Howard, it says Howard Boulevard, but it's not Arlington, Howard Road or Avenue, I believe it is, for $100,000 and plus some funds, fieldwork items related to that. There are two other major projects that are planned for the coming year, that's Cook Avenue Parking and the possibility of the Green Avenue pop-out, so those have already been partially funded and they're in progress, so there might maybe future appropriations for those. Any further discussion? Will call vote, please.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Erlich?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mr. Range?
Yes.
Ordinance 2-2022.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $645,000 from the General Capital Improvement Fund for the 2022 Millian Overlay Projects.
Mayor, I move ordinance 2-2022.
Second.
All right, and the the roads that are covered for 2022 and the Millian Overlay Union Hill, Lee Avenue. Both Lee Avenues, the L E E Lee Avenue and the L E I G H Lee Avenue. Half of Surrey Lane, Elm Street from West to Park Wilmer and Wire Street, and there's also additional appropriations in there for traffic controls, sign replacement, striping, curb replacing, concrete sidewalk and pavers and crack ceiling. Which helps preserve the pavement, so we don't do this so often. Any other questions or further comments? Rachel and Deb.
I just wanted to give a kind of direct answer to Tom's inquiry, that my understanding is that these two ordinance cover all of the typical road reconstruction and Millian Overlay work for 2022. And the reason we do these early is so that they can be bid and awarded and construction can start over the summer. And that the larger projects that are involved, that engineering is involved with, will be ongoing and due to a separate process. They are not being appropriated through these ordinances, as you said, Mayor.
Thank you, and thank you for fully answering his question there, Deb.
Rachel took care of it.
All right, thank you. Hey, roll call vote, please.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Erlich?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mr. Range?
Yes.
All right, and now move on to consent agenda resolutions, will the clerk please read the statement?
Consent agenda resolutions will be enacted with a single motion, any resolution requiring expenditure is supported by a certification of availability of funds, any resolution requiring discussion will be removed from the consent agenda, all resolutions will be reflected in full in the minutes.
Mayor, I move consent agenda resolutions R37-2022 through R47-2022.
Second.
Any discussion or any that need to be pulled? Will call vote, please.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Erlich?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mr. Range?
Yes.
All right, there is no unfinished business and to confirm that we have no approval of vouchers because it's the new year, correct?
Correct.
All right, so new business, I'd like to make the following appointments, requesting council confirmation. For council consent, Peter Woolley as a higher ed representative for unexpired three-year term through December 31st, 2022 in the Downtown Development Commission. And then to Sustainable Madison Advisory Committee, these are two members that are already serving and we had a little we missed him on the reorganization meeting, Angelique Devos, three-year term through December 31st, 2024. And Lisa Jordan, three-year term through December 31st, 2024. I have a motion to accept.
Some of.
Well, in favor? Hi.
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 Unanimous. And Eric.
Mayor, I move we adjourn the meeting.
All, all in favor?
Hi.
All right, thank you all and apologize for my technical difficulties at the beginning, keep warm out there. Take care, be well.